Okay, we're live now. Now called to order this session of the Huntingburg Common Council. Fledge of Legions?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Good Father God, thank you for those that are here to serve today, for those in our community that are here to provide their input. We ask now, as we go into this council meeting, that you guide the decisions that are made here today, that we may do them with an open mind and with the best interest of our community in mind. For these things, we ask of your sons' name. Amen. Do we have a motion to hear approval of the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the 3:11:25 in the council meeting.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Is everything a roll call?
Do we need a roll call?
Yeah, we do. McFerrin?
Aye.
Downs? Ware?
Aye.
Bulte?
Aye.
Kissling?
Aye.
Four ayes, one absent.
Motion carries. We hear a motion to approve the claims. I'll make a motion to approve the claims.
Go ahead.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? McFerrin?
Aye.
Downs? Ware?
Aye.
Bulte?
Aye.
Kissling?
Aye.
Four ayes, one absent.
Motion carries. I have nothing new today, other than just say that, thank you for approving the ordering ordinance that we had last meeting. We've met today with our city employees on reinforcing that, lining up our next strategy of getting the letters out, getting the pictures and what that guy, we can to move forward with that, and just to let you know that there is some movement. We've got to kind of prioritize a little bit what ones we can tack as quickly as we can, and we're looking at those that are the worst, five or six offenders first, and going from there. Okay? We're going to have, today, we have April Blessier coming up today. There's a new medical qualification policy that's, we're required through the state, through our funding, to be able to put in place. This was reviewed by Andrea, as well as April and myself, and just give it to you, April.
Yeah, so they're just updating this policy. One of the updates that they're doing is they combine the prescription drugs with the over-the-county drug policy, so it's together. So, I don't know if you guys have a copy of the old medical policy, I'm sure Phil does, but it's together now, and...
This is really disclosure policy for the drivers, disclose what medication they're under, whether they're able to drive or not.
Right.
There used to be only prescription, right? That they had to declare, but now they're them, they must declare over the counter.
Everything.
Okay.
Yep. And Andrea and I worked on, on page 16, if you look, the consequences of the policy violations. This was up to us, what we put here, and we worked on those together. So, I don't know if you reviewed those, the disciplinary action that we would take. If it was a first offense, it'd be a verbal warning and a plan of improvement. Second offense would be written warning with possible unpaid leave or suspension. Performance of safety-sensitive functions when adversely impacted by prescription or over the kind of medication, they would be removed from driving, and we would send them to an MDO for a medical evaluation. There's the possibility of them being terminated or suspended. It would be based on the circumstances surrounding the incident or the accident. So, and then it needs to be adopted by the common council and approved. So, there's a, I gave a copy to Tom, that needs a couple of signatures on it.
Okay. Go ahead.
Like, somebody wants to take an aspirin, they got to report that? Is that, how, they have...
We're supposed to, okay, so whenever they go to the doctor, there's a medical form. If you look in the back here, there is a medical form that has to be filled out by a doctor if it's a prescription drug. Now, if it, it's this page here. It's like, page 18. Okay, so, the driver fills the top part out, and if you look down here, there's a group one drug, group two drug, group three drug, okay? And it tells you, like, if it's a group three, you're not supposed to be driving, basically. So, the doctor will mark what group the medication is, and whether it's over the counter or prescription, and then how often you'll be taking it, and then sign off on it, okay? Well, they bring that to me, and I have to send it up to IU to get it approved before they can drive, before, if they choose not to take the medicine until I get this back, but this has to be in their file, because if they would have an accident and they didn't have it, like, recorded with us, then that'd be automatic fire. But if it is recorded and they have record of it, then, you know, it just depends on the circumstances.
Okay.
But yes, your question, if it's a over-the-counter drug, and you think it's going to possibly affect you, definitely. Any kind of, like, cold medication, like, when we go for our physicals every two years, I always tell them, put all your over-the-counter medication on there, even your prescription, so that they approve it, like, when you're there. So, I always, my go-to is Alka-Sol's Plus when I got a cold. So, I always make sure I have that on there, extra strength, etc., you know, the stuff that I know that I'm going to use, I put that on there.
What, if you look at the bottom of page 13, top of 14, it puts us back on the floor to read what's on there and follow the warnings that are suggested based upon the use of that. So, if they're taking a vitamin or something, there are no warnings regarding use of the vehicle or any other type of work, that wouldn't necessarily fall into this. But some of those that they look at is the over-the-counter medication that adversely impacts employees' ability to safely perform their job duties. Any medication contains alcohol within four hours, such as cough medicine or something like that, within four hours, or the use of a combination of over-the-counter with the same active ingredients that could result in medical events.
And, a few years back, when everybody started using, what was it called? It had THC in it. So, people were using that for their mood, and we had drivers that were pulled in because they thought they were using, you know, illegal drugs.
CBD oils?
Yes, CBD oils, that's it, yeah. So, we had some that actually tested positive because of that, so you really have to pay attention.
I think it's mainly just, I mean, they have a lot of lives on their hands, you know what, so I think it's just because that, I'm sure a lot of all-public transit has some sort of something with this, just to keep people safe, to make sure that they're not, I think sometimes whenever you take medicine, you accidentally, or you could accidentally have an impact that you don't know about, so this is just covering that.
Right.
I think this is good, yeah.
It covers it all, and, you know, every transit system, anywhere that's operating off government funds, has to follow these rules. So, it's across the board.
Pretty standard. What we just needed to do, a first and a second?
Just a motion to adopt the policy? Any more discussion, or do we have a motion to adopt?
The only thing I was going to comment was, it's very clear in here that it's the employees' responsibility, and there's a series of first, second, third offenses, but, you know, falsification of something is automatic termination, failure to report is automatic termination. It's very clear, so this is standard across, you know, the state and everything, so that's fine. So, I would make a motion to adopt.
I'll second.
You've got a motion to adopt, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
McFerrin?
Aye.
Downs? Ware?
Aye.
Bulte?
Aye.
Kissling?
Aye.
Four ayes, one absent.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Steve, would you?
No sign then?
Yeah, you have...
Somebody? Applicants?
Yeah.
All right, next wave of energy.
It's running up our route, yes.
That's okay, I'm good.
Evening, council.
Hello.
Start off with the gas. Three new services this month, I got four on file. We did change 41 gas meters out into the new census meters. We're a little over 3,000 now, but it's been converted. Then you can see in the pictures, we had to cut out a 30-foot section, or 4-inch gas main on First Street by the fire station, the police station. The old line went right across where the lid, just under the surface. So, when they put the new, to get the castings out and put the new castings in, that line had to be moved permanently, because they were going to move it over a little. So, we had to weld line stoppers on it, then we had to weld in the new pipes, as you can see in the pictures, quite a undertaking. And we had to wait until they were done, and then we had to go back and put the line back in. And you see where a welder almost got to stand on his head when he welds to get the underneath side of the pipe. Then you got to make sure it's all lined up correctly, and then, because you got to be right on it. Takes a lot of several measurements, precision cutting, but it all worked out good.
I was down there when I was working on that line, I was very impressed with what they were doing.
Yeah.
I can't imagine a welder that's better at it than...
Very, very, very good, to not to burn through the pipe and hit the gas. But we got her done, covered up, and all back in service. Any questions on the gas?
Good job.
We went on to the electric, put two new services in, both at Hunter's Crossing. There's only two empty lots left. I think we're getting ready to build one of the two, so that whole subdivision will be done. Then the electric crew did finish up at the new library, the new addition, and we had to add a phase line a month or two back, but we went over and took the temporary stuff down, got the permit service in, so that's all finished. As you can see, the library, it's got the outside pretty well taken shape. Then we rebuilt the electric line on Ferdinand Road southwest, which is just the corner of Sunset and Cherry Street, as we're headed toward Ferdinand. It's an old rickety line, had old copper, so we set six new poles. Had a short outage, took down the old copper lines, we put some aluminum up, so that line's in excellent shape now. Then after that, they moved over to Orchard Ridge. There's an old three-phase line there, which really wasn't needed. We scheduled a short outage with everybody out in that area. We took down two of the phase lines that weren't being used, they were old copper. And then the other phase was aluminum we put up years ago, so we went ahead and got rid of that. And then, we're going to work on a section down by the park. I need approval for the wire, we're going to go underground, a large section of trees. Every time a limb comes out, it usually breaks the line, knocks the circuit out, takes us, you know, hour, hour and a half, two hours to put it back up. We talked to some of the homeowners, they want to keep the trees, so that, we worked, that was one of the options, to take all the trees out, but, like I say, they wanted to keep the trees, so we went a different route, so we're going to go underground. So, I do have a quote for the wire from Brownstown, 12,475, I need approval on. That's the only one we can get the wire from, is Brownstown. It's a regional territorial thing, that's why I don't have three quotes. So, I'd like a motion, or anything?
We need a motion to...
Say a motion to approve the quote from Brownstown Electric?
I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then, I need...
Roll call. At the first.
Oppose?
Oh, I'll... Wait for each other.
Yeah, McFerrin?
Aye.
Downs?
Aye.
Ware?
Aye.
Bulte?
Aye.
Kissling?
Aye.
Four ayes, one absent.
Then I need approval for a small bucket truck. We got the quotes on. As you see, I got, we sent out for three quotes.
Got two.
Two came back, you see the price. They all take us the cheaper one, at 161,515. They're giving us 5,000 on trade-in on a little bucket truck, and it's like 15 months out. It's a possibility we could get it a little sooner. It's pretty much a generic truck, so possibility to get it a little sooner. We don't have to have all the bells and whistles on it, like some of these other utilities. They load them up, but we don't, we didn't see it necessary to get the cost down. It's a Ford 550.
Is it comparable to what you got now, pretty much?
Yeah.
You getting all tech now?
Not the Tarex.
It's a Tarex now?
Mm-hmm.
It's amazing how expensive these things get.
But...
So, you're looking, how many months to get this?
10 to 15 months.
10 to 15, okay. Do we still have the other big truck on order here, right?
Yeah.
And what's the status on that?
It should be here in August. We've had it ordered, it'll be two years in July, I think, we've had it ordered.
That's all.
We were going to reevaluate, see if we needed it, and cancel it, move it to another two years, right?
Yeah.
So, you don't need that truck, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And the funds are there.
Okay.
I'll talk to Tom, so it shouldn't be no problem.
Yeah, these things get dangerous the older they get, and...
Yeah, if you can.
Being a bucket truck, you can't...
Those buckets could fall in, you know, there.
It's not bad when, when it breaks down, but you can't have a bucket truck, the bucket breaking on you.
Do you, do you, when do you get, so do we pay for this one upfront, or do you wait till they deliver it, this is about 161,000?
Wait till it gets delivered.
Okay. I'm happy.
We want to do the other way.
We don't have to, we don't have to pay nothing down or anything.
Okay, so you need approvals, you, so we need a motion to approve?
Yeah.
161?
I'll second.
61,514, okay. 61,514. Any opposed?
McFerrin?
Aye.
Downs?
Aye.
Ware?
Aye.
Bulte?
Aye.
Kissling?
Aye.
Four ayes, one absent.
All right, motion carries, thank you, you have your permission.
Thank you. I would like to say, during that storm the other night, we didn't have a single outage.
Way to go.
I know it got windy. I think most of it went north of us.
I want to commend you, I was at the Southwest Mayors Conference last Thursday, and that was a common theme of people still without power. Five, six days later, they asked us how we did, and I said, "Well, some of you mayors, I called, we offered our assistance, they didn't take it," but we had our hard screen department and wastewater, both got calls from them, wanting to know if they could help at Oakland City, or anywhere that, I know the biggest ones really were where Oakland City are, and...
Like I said, it's a run of it, went north of us, but we still got a lot of wind, and a lot of guys been doing a lot of tree trimming, which helps.
And I think just your line, like the pole replacements, things, you guys have been doing a phenomenal job to look at it.
Pole replacements, new wire and everything, just building up your system.
Yeah, the biggest delay was pole replacements around the community. They didn't have enough poles, so...
Seen a lot of, seen a lot of leaners.
Yeah.
So...
We didn't have no calls that night, but the next day, when it gets daylight, everybody goes out, and there's a few limbs hanging on the electric line or something, we had to go, small calls, but...
It was nice to brag about our electric department to the end of it.
We didn't have any outages.
You're very fortunate, thank you.
Thank you.
Great job, thank you.
Department as well.
Even said a couple of good things about Jerry.
Yeah.
But what?
Thank you. Good conversation.
All righty, we'll jump into distribution. We, as we've talked in the past, anytime we find an abandoned water service that we didn't know about, that's no longer being used, we always speak with the homeowner, business owner, and see if we can get that removed from our water main to prevent future problems. So, we did have one at 306 South Cherry Street. The property there was tore down years ago. That property is now part of what was Phil Sminkie's property there, by your house, Steve. So, remove that service from the main there. And then, we had a tapping saddle at the Waters of Huntingburg off Chestnut Street, and I included some pictures. The top two pictures there are of that tapping saddle. The corporation stop, which is brass, that looks practically brand-new, has been in the ground just as long as that saddle has. The saddle is a cast steel that has a coating on it, that, as you can tell, has deteriorated over the time and rotted away. That service, we've, we've been fighting a wet spot in the curb line for the last year and a half. We've used our listening devices, it comes, it goes, it'll show up for a day, it'll disappear for three weeks. What we found after this winter was the, the water grew larger, where we could actually get a sample of it to be able to, to see that it was possible water. When we dug down on the surface, that saddle was still on the main and was just barely seeping water out of it. So, with the ground, the heat and the cold of the ground, the contraction of the, the service line, it was pulling that service away from the main just enough occasionally to let water out, and then pushing it back up against it to seal it off. So, we got that replaced and taken care of. We, we did attend an 811 pipeline safety seminar as well, just to pick up on the new laws and regulations. And then, we've had, I've got two employees currently that are certified in backflow certification testing, so we've been going around the Old Town Hall, wastewater department, energy department, and police department, as well as the water facility, testing and certifying backflows. And then, we did have a valve box that was broke around snow removal on Fourth Street, so we didn't have to dig up that valve box. Down here, we worked with the Jasper Water Department, they purchased a tool here recently, it's called a Kiefer cutter, and it drops down inside of the valve box and cuts the valve box, and then they have a new insert that drops down inside there, that brings it back down to ground level, so it is flush. It saved us a lot of work, it, it has a seal that goes down over it as well, so it is, is tight, there's not going to be any debris or anything being able to fall in that valve box. Thing with Fourth Street is, it's full of rock. We go to excavate a, you know, a small six-inch hole around that valve box, and we'll have a four-foot by four-foot hole by the time we're done. So, we, we really appreciate their help on that, and...
If you're turning west, it's going southbound, turn west?
Right, yep.
On the Fourth Street, it was just right there.
Just, yeah, just east of...
It was almost impossible to miss, so...
Just east of the gas light, with everybody turning there, it was, it kept flipping the valve lid out of it, so, but, we got it taken care of, and then, we did have a water main break on Highway 64 on February 23rd, it was a Sunday. It took us about an hour and a half to find it. We didn't know where it was, we just, our tank levels were dropping. It was in the field, just to the west of St. Line Drive there, on the, on Highway 64, and unfortunately, there's a ditch line that runs right underneath of it, so it was catching the ditch and following the ditch out there. We lost roughly 1 point million gallons of water with that leak. It was a, it had a 360 crack around the pipe, and then a hole blown in about the side of your fist. So, we spent about eight hours Sunday, working on that leak to get it repaired. And then we had a, another water main break, actually, the, the following Monday night, 11:30. It was a fairly large break as well, we did catch it early, didn't lose near the amount of water, and the, the guys were here from 11:30 Monday night until 3:30 Tuesday in the afternoon. We still have a lot of stuff to clean up, put the road back, and take care of things, so they, they hung in there for us and continued to work throughout the day. Then we moved down to, we kind of worked with the street department a little bit with the hydro excavator, they did a lot of tile work there at 20th Street and Irvine Court. We went out and helped pothole underground utilities for them, it's a lot quicker, takes the possible damage of utility out by using a machine, it's quicker than using a shovel. And then we also assisted them, helping them clean out their beet juice tank out the street department with that machine. And then, we also, I've gone there where we test our wholesale meter pits with Duff and St. Anthony, we have certified double checks there as well, that way, if there's ever an issue with their water systems, with contamination or anything, that water will not flow back on the city of Huntingburg. And then we also, I did miss it on here, but we did start hydrant flushing. We are a little over halfway done with that. It's taken us a little longer this year, we do turn valves in the spring, so every valve in the city does get turned. That, that adds quite a bit of time on it, with the guys having to go, and, you know, most valves are anywhere from 20 to 40, 40 rounds to shut them, and 20 to 40 rounds to open them back up, so...
Is that a manual process?
We, we do have two battery-operated valve, valve turners.
I saw one of them on the internet, it's on...
They're, it's a Milwaukee unit.
Yeah.
And it's very slick, we have, we have purchased two of them over the last probably three years. They're, they're reasonable, they're, they're around $5,000 for the unit, and the, in my opinion, the cost on a rotator cuff surgery, or, yeah, anything along those lines, it, it far surpasses that.
I agree, the world network, these guys.
So, yeah, so we do, you know, we, we try not to, being that we only do that twice a year, we do run two crews, so usually, one guy's using that valve at an intersection, another guy's using a manual wrench, and then at the next intersection, they'll switch. So, we still do manually turn valves as well, but it is a great tool. Anytime we have hard-turning valves, it's, we like to exercise them extra. They have a rubber gate that slides down in, in guides, that seats them in the bottom of that valve for 100% seal. The torriculation in the water main that builds up, also builds up in the valves, so sometimes when that builds up, it'll, it'll cause that gate to slide slowly, so if you continue to open them and close them multiple times, that helps break that loose. One of the, one of the things that we pride ourselves on, to be able to have, I guess, limited shutdowns in the city for water main breaks, there's some of these towns that have to go out five and six blocks to be able to shut down a small area, and we, we have very good luck with shutting down our water system block by block.
Does it have a clutch on it or something?
It, it does, it does have a, it has a gear reduction box on it, and then it does have a slip clutch on it. It, it does take a lot to slip it, though, if you're not...
Yeah.
It does, it has a valve counter on it, so, you know, we all know the size of water mains that we're on, so that's, that's very important for that, because we do want to make sure that it is shutting down. Any valve size is, you take the size of the valve times three plus four. Couldn't tell you why, that's just how, that's the ratio on them. So, we do, they do have valve counters on them, and the guys that are turning them manually sit there and count their rotations. It's a very slow process, it's a quarter turn every second, so we don't get valve hammer and cause any issues with blowing out water mains or anything like that. But, you know, those, those valve counters, they do watch those to make sure we are getting full shutdown. If you aren't paying attention, though, they'll push you around a little bit, but they do have a, they do have a clutch system on them that does kick in, so there's no, no safety, severe safety issues there. I think we, like I said, we've been using them for about three years, and the guy, we started out with one, we ran one the first year, and the second year, we bought another one, so, they work out great. With all that, we have also, Donnie Heim with the Fire Department is getting very involved with any emergency response planning he can do. I won't talk on it too much, because he don't have it launched out there, but he's got a, an app that he's working on with a company, and we are triple-checking our tags for our fire hydrants, our, our fitting sizes on those, to make sure they're all accurate. It's going to be something he's going to be able to put on there, when they go out and they get a call, he can look at that, and it'll tell him exactly how many gallons per minute that hydrant puts out, if it has a storks fitting on it, or if it's a five-inch threaded fitting on the steamer hose, it'll be able to give him a lot of information. If we have fire hydrants out of service, he'll be able to include that in there until they're back in service, so that'll be available to all of his department members as well, so we're really trying to build on that, too, so, kind of slows things down for us, but we're grateful to do it, because it's only going to help the community.
Oh, yeah.
Other than that, we'll jump into the filtration plant. We did our standalone generator that runs the water filtration plant, anytime the, we do... have a power outage. The radiator core sprung a leak on that. So we did, we normally have Evanpar at Evansville work on that stuff. They were kind of out quite a bit as far as getting a crew up here to work on it, so we took some time and jumped in, and half the generator had to come apart. Where'd you get that radiator out of there? It was four-foot by three-foot by a foot and a half thick. It was a very large radiator. But we did get that taken up to Yoder's Radiator Repair, and they completely overhauled it. It's got a new core in it, the tanks have been reconditioned, so it's a new radiator. It is all put back together in a proper working order. Other than that, we had a broken actuator valve. It's the electronic valve for our filtration system that allows our water process that is automated to open and close large gate valves. We did have an actuator go down on that, so we were able to replace it with one we had on hand, and then took this actuator apart to repair it. The other thing that I don't have on there, happened after I filled out this report, is our night shift operator, Doug Polly. He has been working really hard at getting his water treatment test passed. He is, for about the last four months, he's been working as an operator in training underneath our chief operator, Jace Merkel. He did take that test last week and passed that, so he does hold his W two-four water treatment license now. So that's, that test has about eleven percent pass rate in the state of Indiana, so it's always big whenever, whenever we pass those tests because they're extremely hard. So, he'll continue on. We do have to hold a wastewater license out there for our drying beds and our sludge basins. So, he'll continue on to take that test as well as his distribution test as well. We try to have everybody cross-trained to where they can work in the water treatment facility and the distribution system as needed. Other than that, our metering system, we are installing our large diameter meters as they come in. We roughly have about fifteen more that we're waiting on, so we're hoping to have those wrapped up a hundred percent in twenty-twenty-five. So everything will be on our AMI system, and we will no longer require a meter eater. Other than that, I did, when we talked last meeting, I got some information on the two potential coatings for the filter cells that we had spoke about. One was a material called Ovic. Actually, we'll touch on the Warren environmental because it's the first one on the list, and I gave those to you in paper copy because I think I screwed it up and didn't get them out of. But this is the, this is that Ovic material. The Ovic material is the membrane that doesn't harden whenever it's dried. It has some pliability to it. So, we did talk to some communities that have used this Ovic material. They all have good things to say about it. There wasn't one of them that had a bad thing to say about it. There's also two pictures there of the Ovic material that applied it onto some potable water tanks. And then the other one, I apologize, I told you I was going to talk about it first. The Warren environmental project, or product, the three-oh-one dash oh-one, that is the material that is, it hardens a hundred percent after it's applied. I've also spoke with multiple water companies that's used it, and they have no complaints about it. I haven't got one bad thing about any of them. Really, I think when John estimated the total cost on them, they were very competitive with their costs. In my opinion, when we get into this and get to bidding it out, I would like to bid bulk materials out and then go from, go from there from that standpoint. I just, I told you I'd get you guys that information, so you had it to be able to.
One of the big questions out there is none of these will cause an increase in PFOS or any?
No, they will not. Nope, a hundred percent will not. If it's, has anything to do with PFOS, it cannot be used anymore. Yeah, no, I, that's at a government standpoint that nothing like that can be used in the water treatment process, so, no, not at all. We know all too well about PFOS. And then the only other thing I had here is we did discuss coming back with some financial options after they were looked into for that project to try to go ahead and get the ball rolling on that. I did reach out to Buzz Cronin yesterday, and we talked about it a little more as well. He did send an email, I believe you all got forwarded that email. If you didn't, I did include it there in that packet, too, with his assumptions, observations, considerations. One thing with looking at outside, outside funding is due to the fact that we already do currently have an SRF loan, any kind of outside funding that we would seek, we would have to have approval from SRF in order to seek that funding. There is a lengthy window on that to be able to get that approval. Along with that, any outside funding that we normally do usually accurs close to twenty-five thousand dollars worth of cost for application processes and all the paperwork that goes with that.
This may not be eligible, or is it considered maintenance, too?
It could potentially not be, and the fact that.
You're not expanding the plan.
Right. And not that one point two million dollars is a small amount of money, but they also have some regulations with the funding dollar amounts as well. So with that, Buzz did a really good job here, kind of with our finances here, with the key consideration that I myself agree with would be to, with your approval, fund the project as a fifty-fifty, where it'd be six hundred thousand dollars from the water department and then borrowing six hundred thousand dollars from the energy department with a five-year return on that, that loan with the energy department. As you can see here within his email, we have, we've done a considerable job at building our funds up over the last five to six years. When I took this position close to four years ago, I didn't hire an employee to try to help build those funds. The water department has always lacked in funding, so we've got a great crew that's really stepped up, and we haven't had to fill that position, so we've saved that salary. Anything that we can do with time management or can be kept in-house, we've done to keep costs down to be able to, to be able to build our funds. This, this option here with the fifty-fifty loan still also allows us ample funding for water main replacements for the next years to come. We do have one that I will be bringing to council for Walnut Street. It's a community crossing grant. I don't want to blindside you with this and then that, but that water main does need to be replaced. It is very, very constricted, and all the service lines in that block are lead, so they have to be replaced as well regardless.
What line? What street?
Walnut Street between Second and Third Street. So, and it's a community crossing grant that'll be paved this year as well. So we want to get that infrastructure done before the paving comes into play. So, as I said, with this option.
The fact that that depreciation is always in there, and it's not a cash issue.
Yep.
Yeah.
Very correct. So, I don't know if you guys have any questions about any of that, or we can look to move forward to approve that so we can keep this project rolling. We'd like to stay on track so we can do this in the fall in our low-demand time of the season versus the spring and summer.
So you had the report of Commonwealth engineers last meeting and their recommendation
to move forward with, with final plans for bidding. I don't think we took any action on that. We wanted to look at what financing was available. Recommendation by our rate accountant and superintendent is to fund half of the operating funds and the other half with an electric loan. So I think if you decide to go that method, I think we just authorize the bid documents to be prepared, get bids, and then finalize the financing once we have the bids. We don't know how much to borrow until we know what the bids are.
Right. We just want to make sure we've got approval to continue forward.
So it's probably a good idea to go on record tonight if you choose to authorize Commonwealth to proceed with preparing bid documents.
I don't have any further comment. You? I'll make a motion to allow Commonwealth to go ahead with the bid documents.
I'll sign it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? McFerrin?
Aye.
Bowns? Ware?
Aye.
Boltie?
Aye.
Kissling?
Aye.
Five, four ayes, one abstain. Thank you. We've passed, move ahead with Commonwealth on design.
Thank you, guys. That's all I have.
Good plan.
Thank you.
If we can do it in general, why not?
Next, we have Senator Phil Schneider coming back to the gas rate ordinance correction.
As you recall, last meeting, we reviewed after the public hearing the proposed gas rate ordinance, and you decided to reject it and instructed the rate accountant to look at it again and to revise the monthly demand charge or customer charge and reduce the amount of the volume charges in order to lessen the impact of the rates on residential consumers. And also reduce the cash revenue requirements by, I think it was two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, I believe. And so Mr. Cronin has done that, and he's revised his report, and I believe he'll provide a copy of that on the community software. And I think Mr. Cronin is here somewhere in the cloud.
I'm here. Thank you, guys. Do you want me to go through? I won't go through all the slides, but maybe just the ones that changed, but you explained it perfectly. At the last meeting, the council gave us, well, we had a discussion about the extraordinary metering expenditures and some distribution upgrades that are almost done. There's still some out there to be done, but we cut two-hundred-thousand off of the material supply allowance, and then we cut another fifty-thousand off of the electric loan repayment because we think that, you know, we may not even get the phone, we have to borrow it, but, and our cash should catch up, you know, by the end of May. So, the overall rate or increase in revenues was about twenty-four percent before, and now it's down to about seventeen and a half, seventeen percent. So that was a, you know, considerable difference in the amount of revenue increase being requested. And then I think another point is, yes, we were directed to do a little bit more on the base charge, the monthly base charge. In the current version of the slides and the ordinance, we take the residential base charge to twelve dollars and fifty cents instead of seven dollars and forty cents. And then the, we backed into then the impact on the volumetric charge per MCF, and everybody's being treated the same there at eighty-five cents per MCF. And then, instead of, you know, almost a million dollars and nine-hundred-and-fifty-thousand or sixty thousand that we were originally seeking approval of, it takes that down to about six-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand. So, those were some significant changes, and I commend the council. I think we had a really good work session last time. I apologize, I'm not there in person tonight, but if I flash my picture up there, you'd know why. But anyway, that's sort of in a nutshell. Would you like me to just flip through a couple of those slides or?
Yeah, you don't need to do that.
I don't think, I don't even think, I mean, we've seen them already. Everybody has seen them.
Everybody's seen them.
You've seen? We've all looked at them.
We forwarded them to everybody's when they had them.
And so, given that, I'd be available for questions. We did increase everybody's base charge proportionally to the residential base charge. We did not make any change to the outside city surcharge. We left, well, I guess we made a seven-cent change just to get it back to five dollars. In twenty-twenty-two, we had to lower all the rates by one point two percent when the state gross income tax was repealed. So we just went back to five dollars on that charge. That's been the same since, gosh, I think nineteen ninety-four. But we did do a cost of service analysis, had to do with customer density on the inside city versus outside city. It's not just a percentage, it was a specific dollar amount. And then I think I threw a little bit of gas rate history into one of those emails. I don't know if you got to.
It's printed off here.
But I thought that that was, you know, interesting background for, Phil and I have been here a long time. But with that, I guess I'd just take questions, if you have some, or whatever is your pleasure.
I was going to say, I think nobody really wants an increase, but I think we've worked really, really hard to minimize the, or to get this down as low as we possibly can. So we had talked before about doing it maybe in two phases, but I think we've decreased it from twenty-four percent to sixteen percent. So that's pretty substantial in what we've, what we've done.
Yeah, I've considered that, too. I think we're still interested in doing a two-phase thing, or just do it one time.
What would be the complications, Buzz, of phasing this in in two parts? Is it complicated or not?
No, Phil would just have to put another column in the rate ordinance, but it would not be, you know, since we're, we already have the high number in the ordinance, I don't think there would be a problem in doing a two-step phase. What are your thoughts, Phil?
No, I would have to amend the ordinance. You could introduce what you've got before you, then I'd have to, you'd have to amend it before you adopt it. I guess the, and Buzz, you could speak to this, and maybe Tom as well, the concern I would have is, is the gas department needs relief now. I mean, to phase it in is going to delay the relief that they really need, the financial relief that they really need. They're burning through cash, I think at a rate of about two-hundred-thousand a year or more, over above revenues. I just personally believe that you need to implement the rates. Our rate players have had the benefit of low rates all these years, since two thousand thirteen, when there was no rate increases. So I just think it's time to bite the bullet and adopt the rates.
And I did put some updated rate comparisons in there. You know, when you look at where you are with Center Point Utilities, which is a for-profit vestroil utility, and they serve more residential customers throughout the state of Indiana than anybody, and you're significantly less than they are. And in the, on the average, you're not that much different than Jasper. And I think on the peak month, there's a little bit of a gap, but.
Any input from the superintendent?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
We're asking if the superintendent, energy superintendent, has any, any opinion or any, and he's been neck-deep in this for months.
Yeah, I agree with Phil, more or less, like I say, we need to get the rates up to where they need to be to be sufficient.
I want to make sure everybody gets heard, that's all.
I was just going to say, it's hard to catch up without volume, and if we go in a second rate, we're going to miss the initial volume that we hit, we get in the fall and the winter that we're not going to be able to capture. That's another issue.
Glenn asks, wants to say something.
He's got his finger up.
Yeah, I'm just going to agree with Phil that I think we need the cash flow. You know, our gas department is in trouble. If you took out the financial stakes of the bank, I don't think it'd give us a loan. So I think we need to get the cash flow going and get it done.
I don't think anybody's against it, I just think we want to make sure that we've discussed it.
I agree. Go ahead.
And I think the way that we're doing it is going to be a little bit of a tapered approach anyhow, because if we're doing part of it on, like on the base rate, that's going to be a little jump now, and then they'll have through the summer months to kind of adjust, and then we'll have what is on the, the usage will, will happen like in the.
It'll phase in, it'll fade.
Yeah, but it's kind of, I think, going to naturally phase itself in.
We are lucky to have the rates that we had over the past years, like.
We are lucky to have the rates that we had over the past years, like Phil said. The only thing I'm real concerned that we did have a big hit on the, on the wastewater and that probably made up all the savings we did on that where people were paying on their, the rates we're doing for the wastewater treatment plant now. So this is why I'm concerned like, how can they keep us going on a, a still favor in the two-year rate? I know any rate increase we do now is gonna help out. I understand we're still a little bit behind, but we do have the loan and capability from the, the electric department.
I think though that we've reduced it so much from the 24 to where we are now, we have whittled down what we can so that we don't have to phase it out into, we have it as small as we can have now. Because I think that it does stink, the, the wastewater, I mean, I am definitely feeling it on my bill.
I too.
But I think that we, it's because people haven't taken action, you know, that we need to just take action, go forward and do this. So that's my take. And I think that we've done, I mean, we're trying to be good servants of everybody's money and I think that in us taking time with Buzz last time and kind of walking through all the things, cutting, trimming as much fat as we could off of what we have to make it as lean as possible, we've done what we can and now we just need to, to bite the bullet and make the change and then-
Okay.
Because I think it's, it is like we've seen where there's just one thing after another after another. Because after this, if we have to do something else, there's gonna be other increases and that's part of how it stinks, but that's how this is with, you know, everything is going up, so I'm just anticipating another one. Jerry, I'm looking at you for what you have.
This is the only opportunity that we can keep at as low as can is, is doing the two-phase series.
What, how would you do it in two phases?
Split it in half and just do the meter rate changes in half of that and leave the rest to go. I mean, that's the only thing I can really come up with. But if you guys think we need to do it all now, I guess we should.
I think the impact is minimal to, to wait after, after looking at it. I think we've done our due diligence as far as at least we've tried to minimize the impact. Bud was good to work with us, but I would be ready to introduce this ordinance tonight as presented and, and just phase it in. It's gonna come in, you know, we're not gonna say-
I agree.
I think Glenn's in agreement.
Yep.
But, I mean, it's coming anyway, so, but we've reduced it a significant amount. I mean, it's, I think it's more than 24%. It was 27 at one time I was looking at something, so, unless anybody's got further comment.
It's not much difference and if you're taking the initial proposal to two sections, this is a much higher-
It isn't much different.
Much different as what a, a half of the original one was.
Yeah, the, the off-peak rate is about 16%. The, I'm sorry, the, the peak rate, the peak monthly rate was about 16%. The, the, you know, the off-peak rate is a little bit more because, you know, you're starting with such a low base charge to begin with, that five to 10 cent, you know, when you're looking at a $40 bill, it's a bigger percentage than, you know, the volumetric increase in the peak. I don't know if that, if that makes sense to you all, but I did add a lot of, you know, additional calculations in those rate comparisons and I think the first meeting we had, we focused on that one peak month, because that, that's the worst case month and I know it's only the worst case if you're average. If you're above average, it, it could be a little bit worse because you're, you're using more volume, but, but the volume charge went from a $1.40 increase to 85 cents, so that was a significant reduction. But two-thirds of the revenue increase comes from the volumetric charge and about one-third of the incremental revenue comes from the, the base charge.
Okay.
Be 2025-08.
I'll make a motion to introduce ordinance 2025-08.
I'll second.
First and a second? All those, to introduce ordinance 2025-08. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? McFerrin.
Aye.
Bowns. Ware.
Aye.
Boltie.
Aye.
Kissling.
Aye.
Four ayes, one absent.
Thank you all.
Thank you Buzz.
Thanks Buzz.
So the next step would be to sign this for a public hearing. Our next meeting would be the eighth, April 8th, that I, be awfully close, we'd have to get into the newspaper on Saturday and it's-
I won't be able to be there on the eighth. I could do it by Zoom, but I'll be up to come.
So perhaps the 11th, the 22nd would be our second meeting in April and we need a quorum to be able to-
Come on.
We need, we'd need just a quorum and, but we could not participate electronically because it's an establishment of a final where I can't be electronic. So the eighth is possible, as soon as possible, that, that would be a stretch. The 22nd would be the preferable.
Yeah, that one works for me, the 22nd. You know, to be in person, I could, I could zoom in on the eighth, but-
We do a poll, do you think, well, I have a quorum on the 22nd? I will not be at that meeting either.
I think so.
I'll be there.
I'll be there.
There's three.
All right.
We actually have a public hearing on a higher rate proposal than the one we're scheduled for now, but I'll put the 22nd, is that at 5:30?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna look that on my calendar and thanks to all, I think you, you've really given a lot of thought to this decision and I, I feel very good about how you're proceeding right here.
Hang on Buzz, I got a question about the connect and reconnect fees.
Oh.
I think we got three ordinances on that.
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll have to bring those back.
They're all gonna be the same amount.
Yes. So right now, we're increasing the gas connect and reconnect charges. The other utilities are lower, we want to bring them all up to the same level. So at the next meeting, I'll bring ordinances that would revise those non-recurring charges for reconnecting water and gas.
So we get all, all the same, yeah?
And water, electric, and water and electric, because gas is gonna be controlled here.
Majority of the reconnect fees are occurred by the electric department.
Okay.
So I want to make sure that all gets the same, because it really causes confusion.
Complicated for the utility parts.
You got different.
So that will all be in place by the time the gas rates become-
Those are, those are non-recurring rates, so those are-
Yeah. They don't impact any current customers.
That's right.
Just want to make sure that all, all three utilities get the same, same charge.
Do we, do we need to make a motion to set a, set the meeting?
Hearing date.
Hearing day. I'll make a motion to set the hearing day for April 22nd, 5:30 PM, council chambers.
I'll say it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? McFerrin.
Aye.
Bowns. Ware.
Aye.
Boltie.
Aye.
Kissling.
Aye.
Four ayes, one absent. Meeting dates been, Harry dates been set for April 22nd. Thank you everybody for your input. Kirk Frazier, Thomas Stippel.
Nothing.
Council items?
One thing I wanted to say is I made a comment internally today. Great job by Shelley Leather's downstairs helping us out on this new format we're using. Appreciate her and I want to make sure that's publicly known, she's doing a great job at this point. Well, she is.
Yeah, she did a great job on my issue too, on my same issue.
Your header up here, there are how-to videos and they're available now too.
Now I can get to it.
How you get to it? There are some how-to in your head product, but I'm not sure that it pertains to you because I haven't looked at them yet, but yeah, it is a new system and it's great. The only thing I want to add is that it looks like by June, we'll be converting our meetings over to Zoom from YouTube. Wanted to just, and part of that reason is for security reasons right now. YouTube allows for too much hanky panky from AI people where they can actually change your voices and what you're saying at these meetings. They can also make derogatory comments and they can insert ads that are inappropriate, so we're trying to get away from a lot of that stuff that's happening with YouTube. Our connection is gonna be, our picture quality will go from 720 to 1,080 DPI, which will be-
Better.
A lot better. It'll be the same system that all the state offices are utilizing now for their public meetings rolling too.
I don't like about you, but I kinda like the blurry feeling.
The other thing that this allows us to do is that we'll have a touch screen here as well as a touch screen off to the side that we do not need to utilize Rob and Mendel to set these up.
Oh, nice, yeah.
Because Rob likes vacations, he likes to be home at night with his family.
I believe it.
When we go to all the board meetings that, that will be included in this project, it'll just probably be, we're probably using services for it. So it allows us to touch and go with Zoom. Also, we can share that media that can be recorded, so just to let you know, we're working towards that. You may see some speakers and cameras and things being installed, but we'll move from there. I noticed that Windows 10 is no longer gonna be supported after October. I'm not sure if that affects these, because these Windows 10 is what's loaded here.
I had that conversation with Rob, now remember what all he told me, so.
Okay.
That's a Rob question.
Yeah, there's, I think we'll have, I know most of our available, at least Tan's and Jeff's will be once it gets his new.
I know this, my battery life is about 30 minutes on this.
Mine's really bad.
It's gone from 30 to 63 while we're here, so it's not charged adequately, so we have to look it down. I know we did have the budget for this year, but we'll have to scrape it from somewhere. Just an update too, because we did discuss it in both, both board, public works in here is that Tom and I did look at funding options. I think we're ready to move forward with the roof at the city hall, as soon as we get approval, set out for bid, we'll probably give a couple of different options of bidding and make a decision from there.
It's broken all day.
That's good.
So I know some of that's from the cigarette, tobacco and a couple other funds that are sitting there.
It's good use, use money for that.
Say non-property tax funds, hopefully most of it. All right. They have any citizen items? Alia, do you have anything?
Um, not really.
Talk about what you're doing next week.
Um, yeah.
April 1st.
Yes, we're gonna go to Indianapolis. Is it like a legislative conference?
Yeah, we'll spend some time at AIM and then head over, meet with your legislators. It'll be a fun day, April 1st, a lot of scheduled on that day, a lot of big bills are set for vote, including SB 1 and some of the other bigger ones. So it'll be, it'll be a great experience for you. We'll talk about that on the way up and the way back and-
Pretty much your whole club besides one student will be going, so it's pretty exciting.
Very good.
Other than that, I don't really know anything, but personally, the sky's limit is this weekend, so if you don't have anything going for your family.
It's from 10 to 1?
11 to 3.
11 to 3.
On Saturday.
I'm sorry, I have a 10 to 1 on my schedule, so I guess I have it wrong. Any updates on the farm?
On what?
Under your garden?
Not yet. We're struggling to get everyone like to go there. So that's, that's our biggest problem, but once we set a date, we'll get some going.
Just ask them to set a date, we'll have city employees there to help them with, with it to, let's get it all done in one day and knocked out.
I have the same problem when I schedule things that involve hoes, rakes and shovels, I can't get it. Phil knows that, I was by myself.
I'll need a, number 13, we need to counteract that, we need to act on that right now. That's the adjournment section of today's.
Oh.
Got a motion adjourned?
I'll second.
We have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? McFerrin.
Aye.
Bowns. Ware.
Aye.
Boltie.
Aye.
Kissling. One absent. Call them, meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks everyone.
Thank you.